Joel, are you still out there?
I'm here.
Yes, we can now hear you. You have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Living Harp is choice, Joel Hurwitz. As you work on your strategic plan, first, apparently, as I planned about your minutes for work sessions, apparently, this is a special meeting because apparently you think that work sessions can't occur on Wednesdays. Because to me, it looks like a work session. Uh, under your procedures. The current plan has strategic priority for identity. One goal is to improve CA's visibility as a valued partner and enriching the quality of life community cohesion connections. Objective three is to create true partnership through the village boards. And objective five is improve communications from CA to community and partners. As I shared with you previously, having work session minutes would help communicate to the community and your partners. Related strategic priority advocacy, the goal on issues that are key to Columbia's values and are key to our future as a unique diverse master plan community. Objective one, conducting annual valuation of CA priorities that considers all stakeholders. And two was coordinate advocacy efforts with village boards where appropriate. First, I want to point out you had a lack of understanding in the past of the general assembly's procedures for advocacy with them. This is especially apparent during the secretive discussion, the bankruptcy case that affected CA's leading priorities. CA showed it did not understand the procedures. Why, on the one hand, not wanting to draw attention to the issue because no one would say what was happening while also asking for late fire, considering late filing of a bill past all the deadlines which have required a two thirds vote in the general assembly. You also don't understand your own governing documents multiple times I've written and spoken about the council meeting to nominate during the ethics discussion and during the removal of one of the board members. There were numerous examples of a misreading and misinterpreting the governing documents and the relationship of the villages and to the council reps. As the email I sent you the other day, I now realize that CPR land is accepted from the definition of a lot in three of the village covenants unless it should not be voting. I also sent an email about the general assembly this afternoon and I asked it to be O C, which meeting later put both those on the agenda. In particular, the voting policy and to add more discussions of the general assembly legislation during the legislative session at each of your meetings. But you can advocate and don't put it under questions only, but have more discussion if you want to write a letter or have somebody go testify. So that's the B O C next. And consider that for your strategic plan discussion today first. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Alan.
Yeah, Joel, generally speaking, minutes, at least as we've construed them, have to do with decisions. And and maybe a decision that's accepted or not. What would you? In short, what would you like to see from work session minutes since there are no formal decisions made?
As I shared with you in your packet from September, definition of a meeting, which you pulled out of the HOA rules, I believe, said that it was a meeting of a quorum with the members for deliberating or discussing business. So so long as you are deliberating, discussing a summary of what you deliberate and discuss. And as Sky pointed out, members of the community would like to see the residents speak out memorialized. So that would also be discussed. If you want to have a presentation from a person and you don't ask any questions and don't deliberate, I don't think you could get away with calling that not a meeting. But if you do start asking questions of the presenter, I think you're now deliberating.
Any further questions? Thank you for your testimony. That concludes the resident speak up for this evening. To limit interruptions during board discussion, all members of the general public will now be returned to the audience. This means you'll no longer be able to show your camera or unmute your audio, but you're more than welcome to stay as an attendee and watch the remainder of the work session. You can also watch a live stream of the live stream YouTube page. Thank you so much for your participation tonight. I will now make a moment to allow staff to make this transition. So our meeting topic for tonight's meeting is introducing the consultant for CA's new strategic plan. I will introduce Deepa Surneva San, not how you pronounce it?
Yes, that is correct.
Thanks. The founder, the president, the founder and president of vision planning and consulting, who will give us an introductory presentation.
Thank you very much. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yes.
Okay, perfect. My connection seems a little unstable, so during the presentation, I'll probably turn my camera off if that's okay. And then I'll turn it back on for questions.
But do you?
Armsby, if you want to do a short introduction, then I'll go into the presentation.
Okay.
Sure. Thanks for that, Deepa. So good evening, board members, CA leadership and members of the public. So again, my name is Armsby Carbon and I serve as the director of I T here at CA. And currently the functional lead of the internal team who is supporting the development of the five year strategic plan. So really just a brief recap, we came to the board back in July and we were able to complete a review of the outcomes of the sunset in strategic plan. Since that activity, we've had some additional conversations with the board and we were tasked as an internal team to pursue onboarding a strategic partner to help with the development of the next five year strategic plan. So we put ourselves to task in collaboration with the president's office and my team. And we worked through that goal. We connected with our purchasing team and released an RFP for this work back in September with proposals due back on October the twentieth. There were thirteen responsive proposals to that RFP. And all those proposals were evaluated. And the contract was eventually awarded to Vision Planning and Consulting. So they are a local firm to Howard County and has a wealth of experience in this space. And I really just again want to introduce Deepa and her colleague, if Andrew's on the line to really, you know, extend to the board a little bit about their background, their intent, how they will approach this scope of work and assist the board in meeting this priority goal for for this fiscal year. So with that, Deepa, I'll kick it off to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Armsby, and good evening, everyone. I'm Deepa Shrinivasan and I'm president of Vision Planning and Consulting. We are located right outside Columbia in Fulton, Maryland and have been in business for over seventeen years doing work for a variety of agencies, federal government agencies, states and local governments. We've also worked with Howard County on a number of plans and studies. And then we work with non for profits as well as academic institutions. And what I'd like to do is to sort of provide you a summary of our proposal, just to kind of walk you through some of the highlights and as also some of the steps that we're going to be taking over the next, the course of the next few months to develop the strategic plan. So with that, I will pull up my presentation here. See. Can you all see my screen?
Not online, not yet. We're still seeing the timer where our presentation might go.
Okay. I'm assuming you can see my screen. I'm going to stop sharing my video just to save some bandwidth here.
We know we cannot see the screen.
We can't see the presentation at all right now.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a copy of it here?
Armsby, can you?
So we have a local copy and Drew will assist with getting that up as a contingency.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, just tell us what slide you want to be on.
It's on.
It's up now.
Not online, it's not.
Okay. I cannot see the screen. I wonder if everybody else can.
We can.
But can you can you share from our side?
You can't share from this side, but.
Oh, no.
Okay, that's fine. Then I will just pull up my my version and talk from that if that's okay.
We got two people.
We have two. You got two people online that can't see it.
Can we send it a copy of the to the board? So
Maybe this is our IT's way of telling us that they don't want us to have Wednesday meetings.
They had the they had her share screen up just.
It's for a gentle hint for the budget discussion.
We've never had this problem on Wednesday before. As far as I can recall.
No, I don't.
Or call any problems on Wednesdays.
But remember, we switched over to a new system. We used to just use Google. Google needs. Rock solid.
Yeah, they they had it up. Well, he wants that it was a
Why that's been charred board? So they fall along.
All right, I'm gonna try sharing my screen again here. Okay, it says my screen is loading.
It's a look at options to view. Is there anything under that?
Yeah, if you go to the top to view options next to the green box, you can switch from timer to to shared screens. It says Deepa and timer. You just select Deepa.
Timer.
Are you talking to us online? Are you talking?
Can you can you all see my screen now?
Yeah, we can. So in the, Alan, can you see this? In the top middle, next to the green bar.
Oh, there it is. You're viewing timer screen. There it is. Ah. Got it.
Yeah.
There we go.
Nice. Can everyone online see the presentation?
I can.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Cool. We're good. Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, can you see the title slide?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. I think we're ready to go now. All right. Can you see the value statement slide?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now I think we're good. All right. So to tell you a little bit about our approach to this strategic planning RFP. We understand that this is a strategic planning process and we have done a number of these, but we also wanted to sort of look at it from the lens of what CA provides to its members. So we brought in our technical experts, our comprehensive planners, our hazard mitigation planners, as well as our strategic planners to sort of form a team to take this process forward and provide this as a sort of a unique approach. And the reason being, there's a number of firms and folks that can do strategic planning, but really understanding the the reason behind some of the the goals and the objectives that that Columbia Association had in its previous process, whether it's environmental stewardship or resource protection or climate change or any of the above recreational uses. It's important to sort of understand where they're coming from, from a technical standpoint, which was why our approach was to sort of engage our comprehensive planners as well. Our our proposal was also based on our previous visioning experience. Our team members bring over sixty five years of combined visioning experience, whether it's in conducting one on one interviews or charrettes or workshops or public meetings or interviews. We sort of have done the gamut and our approach to a number of projects that we do in the planning arena is to involve diverse stakeholders in a manner that appeals to them. So, you know, if they're not able to attend a public meeting, try to reach them via survey or or via an individual confidential interview or and what have you. So depending on the stakeholder and the category and where they're coming from, we sort of tailor our visioning process to suit that and make it all inclusive. As I mentioned, we are a local business. We are familiar with the area. I'm personally, I'm very familiar with CA because I use CA facilities and I'm in those locations a lot of the time. So just our familiarity and and our familiarity in working with Howard County and various departments with the county over the years. Also, like I mentioned, we are a project specific purpose built team. We've developed this approach specifically for this project and identified planners that that would be a good fit. And then also our plan usability and dynamism. One of the the focuses of our planning processes is that a plan is not expected to sit on the shelf. It's something, it's a living document and we need it to be alive and dynamic and and sort of always, you know, where the community is on the move all the time. So with that, what we will be presenting to you in the final document is sort of an implementation plan, which goes beyond just looking at goals and objectives, developing some actions that are realistic and then identifying the who, what, where and when. And I'll talk about it a little more in in a couple of slides. All right. So in speaking with the CA team in the last week, we've sort of defined our approach. We're going to do a soft reset on the objectives that are existing. We're going to define priorities. And then we're also going to look at what's called an implementation strategy and this this diagram here, the snapshot here is not something that I expect you to read, but just get an idea of what some of the activities are, who's going to be implementing it, who's going to be the lead entity implementing some of these activities? What the timeline would be to implement these activities and what priority, whether it's high, medium or low priority. So we'll we'll sort of work with with CA on developing this implementation plan. We'll also look to coordinate efforts with other strategic planning processes that are going on. We understand that the Howard County Library System is developing their strategic plan and so and the Arts Council and so on and so forth. So we'll try to limit redundancies and work with the CA to identify, you know, where they are in the process, who they've, who the stakeholders are that have been involved, just to make sure that folks don't get wary with with just, you know, responding to surveys or attending meetings and so on and so forth. And then we'll also leverage some of the events that CA has over the the holiday season to come up with outreach. So we will be developing a survey that's going to be online, but we'll also have hard copies of the survey at some of these events. So we can get, you know, better response rate. So that's sort of our approach, just based on on hearing where CA is in in the whole process. So with that, I'll get into briefly talking about the project tasks. Our first task is the initiation and and basically getting, you know, started off. So we did the kickoff call meeting last week and we'll hold regular meetings with the CA group to make sure that, you know, we the the plan is on track from a schedule standpoint, from a budget standpoint. And then also we're getting the information that we need and then we will update them on our progress on a regular basis. We'll also review documents and develop a community survey. Documents that we'll review will be provided by CA and then we'll sort of identify what some of them are saying and what what the general consensus is from a is from a community standpoint, just to make sure that we are in line with what has already been developed. We'll also look to develop the survey. This will be, like I said, an online survey. We'll develop a few variations for different stakeholders. For example, the public will have one version of the C, the survey, the senior leadership will have a slightly nuanced version of it. So develop the survey, collate the results and then present the results in a in a manner that's user friendly. We'll also be conducting work sessions and interviews. We'll do a work session with senior leadership. We'll be conducting staff interviews. We've identified the number of interviews to be conducted and in in the first couple of weeks in December and we're in the process of identifying who should be interviewed. We'll also be doing a couple of community group workshops and webinars, just so we can get maximum reach. We have a meeting, a work session scheduled with the CA Board of Directors that is scheduled for the eleventh of January. By then we'll have a good amount of you know, input from from the community, from from the stakeholders and we'll be able to present that to you. We'll have some survey results to present. We'll sort of work through it, get your input and then weave that into the plan. And then finally, we'll have a summary memorandum of the same. The the end product will be a draft strategic plan that we will put together along with the implementation strategy that I talked about. We will present it to CA for review and then tweet those comments, incorporate those comments and develop a final version of the strategic five year strategic plan and then present it to the board. So that is sort of our our process in a nutshell. And this here is a is a project schedule. Like like Armsby mentioned, we started last week and our sort of deadline is the end of April. So there's a lot that needs to be done between now and the end of April, considering that we have a couple of the holiday season in between. But we will make sure we stay on track and report our progress to to the client on a regular basis and provide you with a with a deliverable that's going to be useful for you. And with that, I will stop sharing and I'll open it up. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. I do have a couple of other team members who are not going to be able to attend the call today. But Mike Bayer and Andrew Estrein from our offices will be working closely with me on this project.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Nice to know Alan has the first question. Alan?
Yeah, thank you. Got a couple. You talked about being cognizant of other organizations going through strategic planning. Is that in order to interface with those organizations or is that just to make sure the public isn't getting tired of answering strategic planning questions for multiple organizations?
I think it's more of the latter and we're going to be working with CA staff on that to to determine exactly you know, what the the process has been in the past because this is something that we just learned in the last couple of days, that there are a couple of other strategic planning processes in place and we want to make sure we get you know, maximum input as as any other process would and we'll we're going to determine how to best do that.
Great, thank you. When you talked about the CA group, that's a group of staff members, correct? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
What is the, in your process, what is the role of the existing strategic plan, if any? Did you hear me?
Did you hear the last question?
I did.
I'm sorry.
Deepa, did you hear the last question from Alan?
In in your
I may not.
Deepa, can you hear me now? Okay, in your in your process, what is the role, if any, of the existing strategic plan?
The existing strategic plan will play a fairly large role, one in that we want to build off that plan. We don't want to scrub, to eliminate what has already been done because a lot of thought and time has gone into that process. So we want to build on it. Now, there might be some deficiencies that we will identify when we get into the process and we will kind of make sure that we'll take it a step ahead from from what I've seen. We we found that it was sort of high level. It did touch on a number of different areas, but it was high level. But the question becomes, how do we implement this and who's going to do it and when is it going to be implemented? And that's that's when the implementation strategy will come into place. But in a nutshell, to answer your question, we're not going to start from scratch. We will build on it. We will wed it with the groups to make sure that some of these objectives are still valid. And if they're not, we'll replace them with others.
And in terms of at the end of the process, in terms of editing and reviewing, is that between you and the staff group or does that include the board?
Um, right now, the way we have set it up is with with the staff group. So typically what happens is in some of our other planning processes, if we have another level such as the board, we ask that the staff forward, you know, forward the version of the draft to the board, get all the comments consolidated and then provide it to us. So if the board is interested in in reviewing the final plan and having a say, certainly we will, you know, we will make an allowance for that.
Right. One last question.
Hey, Kristen.
A little a little bit of philosophically. One last. A lot of people in this space are talking more about strategic thinking than strategic planning. Is that something you all think about, talk about? Is that is that a way of looking at this that makes sense to you?
It it does. And right now, I think without having gotten into the process, I think it's a little abstract, but just from our experience, I think there is, there is an amount of strategic thinking that goes into a strategic plan and and I think that's something that we will, we will end up doing.
Okay, thank you.
Chris.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So you had mentioned a survey and getting community input. Can you talk a little bit more about how you're going to do that survey? You know, the Columbia Association does do surveys to get input from folks on the budget. Is it going to be kind of a similar process? How exactly do you run that survey and what kind of in in your previous experience, what kind of response rates have you gotten?
So we have done a number of surveys. We have developed online surveys. It just seems like when we do online surveys, our response rates are a little bit higher because it literally is a clickable button for a number of people. And we develop our surveys in usually in Survey Monkey. And it's advertised. So for example, we could advertise on the CA website that here's a survey, this is the link, it's going live on a certain day. We urge you to to respond. So we do that on the online side. And then, like I mentioned, if there are CA events, we'd like to have hard copies of those surveys, survey forums, and then we will collate all of that information. If you if you can get back to the second part of your question, I will answer that as well.
Kind of what your response rates are in in previous experience and how the 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 information that you get from the surveys will be used. How will is it weighted so far as how the input is utilized? What is the the method by which you'll incorporate the feedback you get from the community as opposed to that from staff and the board?
So there's going to be qualitative questions and quantitative quantitative questions. So with the the quantitative ones, it's easy because we'll come up with with a percentage and we'll we'll present it to the board and sort of vet it and make sure that, you know, this is the direction. This is what the people are saying. What do you think and where do we want to go? With qualitative, I think we're going to have some sort of a discussion because not everybody is going to agree. The board may not agree with what they're hearing. So we're just going to have to see, you know, what what comes out of these surveys. And understanding that the public surveys are going to be different from the staff surveys, we will present that information as is, like I said, we'll collate the information, we'll present, we'll have charts and graphs and sort of, you know, show you what what's coming out of those surveys and then develop the objectives from there. To answer your earlier question, our response rates have been all over the place. As you can tell, more recently, we did a survey for coastal resiliency master plan for one of the, you know, one of our neighboring states and we received as many as thirteen hundred responses. That is not usual, but that was one where that was a success story. There was a lot of outreach that went out on a regular basis to all the constituents to make sure that, you know, people have their say. So from our end, we will develop, you know, an ad, we'll develop the material for for CA to push out to make sure we we get a we get a high response rate.
What was the percentage on that? Thirteen hundred out of how many possible respondents?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, say that, say that again.
What was the, what was the percentage? It is thirteen hundred responses out of a potential, how many?
Um, that was, um, I have to go back and look at my notes. I mean, I, I don't know if we even had a uh, had a mass, a total mass to come up with that percentage, quite honestly. Because it, it was, you know, it went out to, all of it went out to about six or eight counties that were sort of on the coast. Um, so it went out to the towns, it went out to community organizations. So it was hard to, I don't think we even came up with a percentage because we didn't have a total, uh, you know, for us to develop that number from.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
But when we, uh, I, one more thing, when we, when we develop our survey, the first few um, questions are sort of general questions. So we were able to, in, in that particular instance, we, we had some sort of demographics. We had where they were, where they were located, uh, you know, what hazards they were exposed to, um, what their, um, age group was, uh, gender, socioeconomic. So we had some of that to be able to say, okay, you know, this percentage of people responded of, you know, based on, on whatever was asked. So we can certainly do that in this case as well.
Yeah, Deepa, I don't know if you've done this, but I really want to make sure that the residents, um, the people who pay the, the assessments on their properties, the people who live on, on rental properties that are, uh, that are assessed. I really want to make sure that they're included in the survey. And so have you, I, I, I couldn't really see your project plan, um, it's just too small to read it on the screen. Have you included any outreach to the ten villages to come and present to the village boards? To hold any kind of resident town halls out in the villages to kind of make sure the community is engaged? Um, I'm
Yes, I believe you.
Is, is we've just recently done, um, a survey for the play areas. And so we've got the survey link up at every single play area in, uh, Columbia. And I'd like to see something similar for your survey when you start to survey people, because we've just gotten gotten a lot of responses to that. And I feel like it's a good way to get the information out there that this is going on. So, uh, yeah, if you could respond about reaching out to the villages and then also, um, how you're going to distribute the survey. Do we lose Deepa?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I think, um, I, I think I had a hard time hearing you, but from what I gathered, uh, with respect to the villages, I think we have a couple, uh, work sessions, um, couple workshops that we have scheduled, uh, that are going to be, um, hybrid, um, and, uh, you know, they will, they, they will be able to log on, um, online as well. So we will certainly reach out to, um, to the villages with, um, on that note. And I think you might have mentioned a, a, a study or a survey that you did for the parks. Uh, I, I do want to get more information from you on that and take that into consideration.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the play, we're, we're reimagining the play areas in, in Columbia. So we wanted to get input from all the residents who use the play areas and, and, and beyond. And we've gotten a really good response to the survey. But what we did was, um, staff put up links to, they put up, uh, Q R codes at all the play areas so that people who are out there see them and they could take the survey, you know, using their phones. And I'd like to see a similar effort for the strategic plan so that we get as many people as possible, whether it's at our neighborhood.
And, and I think our service are all these restaurants.
So that as many residents as possible can have an opportunity to respond.
So real quick, I'll make sure that Deepa gets everything.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm also concerned about the, uh, response rate. And, um, generally it's, it's a good response rate is between ten and thirty, thirty percent. Um, and I'm wondering if you will be predicting the response rate before you start uh, um, going through the surveys. And my other question is about, um, you said you were going to
I'm, I'm having to
You were going to send the surveys electronically as well as hard copy? And I'm wondering, um, people get so many duplicate emails nowadays that, you know, I forget I, I filled out one survey. And so one thing that's built into a survey is, um, you already filled out this survey, so don't do it again and, and prevents me from doing it again. But when you have hard copies, um, and, and I'm sure this is probably miniscule and you, you probably have, have similar results from other surveys that you've done. I'm, I'm not sure I'm explaining myself right.
Duplicates? Yeah, I, I guess, I guess what you're asking is about how do you, how do you ensure that there's no undercounting or overcounting of results that someone not submitting, someone not submitting a hundred surveys to skew the results?
And, and I'm sure that one of your introductory questions is maybe what village do you live in? And do you live in an out parcel? And, and that would answer some of Karen's questions. Um, but some people don't know if they live in an out parcel or not, or even what village they live in.
Yes, I mean, we will, um, sort of add, that would be one of the questions that we would ask. And with regards to your comment on folks, um, you know, filling out several surveys. If we get them to fill out one survey, that's, that is a big deal. And in the grand scheme of things, um, that's not something that we can control, but that has never been a problem. We're just happy to get um, as many surveys as we can. And, uh, uh, you know, we do ask them to identify themselves, uh, you know, if they, if not by name, but other, you know, their address and so on and so forth. So if we come across in our, while collating, if we come across, uh, you know, someone that's filled five surveys with the same handwriting and the same sort of this thing, then we'll discount, you know, what is not needed. But we've never really encountered that problem. Like I said, we're happy to for people to just, just fill them out.
And I'll point out, I believe Survey Monkey has, uh, controls in place to make sure that people can't fill out multiple surveys with the same email address. Um, Bill?
All right, good evening. I saw this from Wild Lake. Um, I do have a survey question like everybody else, so, but I'd like to take a deep breath, maybe change topics for a second and I'll get to the survey in a moment. Um, one of the things I'm concerned about is, uh, since our last strategic plan, we've seen a whole lot of things, you know, world changing and both locally. And I'm concerned about planned resiliency and the ability of, uh, a plan in, in the face of, uh, adverse conditions to, to adapt and allow the board, uh, you know, to provide guidance to the board. Um, a- as, uh, we move through, you know, I don't expect another pandemic, but five years from now, we could be in a totally different place for some other reason. So could you talk to, to us about planned resiliency and how you foresee that being built in a strategic plan?
Sure, sure. So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about plan maintenance. But before that, I, I want to just sort of, something I didn't mention in the introduction is um, our core competency is in the space of disasters. Uh, we do everything from disaster preparedness to hazard mitigation, to emergency response, to long-term recovery planning. So we are in that realm with working with FEMA and local communities to improve resiliency. That's sort of our, our, our core competency, if you will. Now talking about the, you're absolutely right. I mean, you know, the last five years have been like no other five years, right? So who knows what, what's going to happen in the next five? Uh, when we develop our hazard mitigation plans or our, our comprehensive plans, um, we, we talk about plan maintenance. And what we do with that is in a hazard mitigation plan, I'll give you an example, even with the Howard County has a vacation plan that we've developed. Uh, we build in a plan maintenance section. So every year, once a year, the plan is sort of evaluated for currency. Um, how relevant are these goals and objectives and actions that we developed in twenty twenty-two? What has changed? What have people come and gone? Is this relevant anymore? Uh, you know, had we not thought about this, should we include it? So, so my, um, sort of recommendation would be to have that annual, um, sort of checkpoint and then do an update every five years. So then what, what happens is that that fifth year, it's not going to be a whole lot different from the fourth year versus not doing anything for five years. Then we might need to revisit a whole, a lot of things. So, um, so that would be sort of our approach. We'll, we'll sort of recommend the same approach that we do for our hazard mitigation plans to look at it, um, at the one-year mark and just, you know, make any tweaks to the plan and make it current as of those twelve months and then going into the next year. Um, I don't know if I've answered your question, but I'll be happy to elaborate.
I think that, that is, is very helpful. I, I think on the board's side, we'll have to try and develop a policy as to who will be responsible for that plan meeting. I think that's, that's a wonderful way to
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Um, quick other question.
We'll identify, we'll give you some ideas on who we think should be part of that group to, to carry that plan forward.
Understood, understood. Move, moving on, because I know time is precious. Um, our current plan, i- if printed out, I think spans all of three pages. Um, as a finished product, what, what could you describe in general terms, what we'll be looking at as far as what that product will look like, um, as far as just, I don't know, heft or, you know, major areas, uh, just give us a little bit of what we're, we should look for.
Um.
Off the table.
Of, I, I'm not sure if I fully understood or heard your question, but I think you had, you mentioned that the current plan is three pages. I can guarantee you our plan will be, um, more than three pages. Uh, it, it won't be a, a four hundred page document that's, you know, too hard for even, you know, to hold with one hand and in a binder. It won't be one of those. It's going to be a very concise document, but it will, um, it will have, you know, different areas. Um, and I think just from, um, recalling some of the strategic planning objectives you had and mine metal stewardship, you had some resource protection, you had some other categories. So we will start looking at those categories and build outward from there. Um, it will be a, a, a lean document, but it won't be as concise as three pages. However, the implementation plan section that I showed you, if you recall that, um, that difficult to read table, that can be all of two pages. And essentially that's what you need to sort of, it's, that's your roadmap going into the future. You know, it'll give you, uh, all of the actions and it'll even give you a status of action. So when we develop that matrix, and, uh, when I, when I said something about the twelve-year, the twelve-month, um, you know, annual, uh, evaluation of the plan, you can go through that list and say, okay, this, this, uh, action has been completed or this is no longer valid. Or this has been stalled for funding, or this is defunct, or we need to change this action to add this. So you'll essentially, if you have that, that implementation plan, which is going to be very concise, a few pages only, um, that should be enough to kind of, you know, help you move forward.
So Bill, are you looking for like a template or a, uh, example document?
I'm looking for a general description and, and like a table of contents. And I think that
Sorry, could you do that for me?
Much filled that up. Um, I'll hold her to somewhere between three and four hundred pages. That's
Passes the staircase.
I'm jo- joking there, but
Well, I, I will say, a, a typical plan will be about, um, you know, I would say forty pages. I'm, I'm just hazarding a guess right now. Um,
My apologies. I think you've answered the question well. I'll get back to the survey now and then I'll get off the, the mic here. Um, I've been listening and I think what, what I'm hearing from my fellow board members is that it, it, Survey Monkeys, I think we're all familiar with that, that method, that outreach, that survey method. Um, but I think we'll probably need some sort of background methodology on how we'll be able to, to find the, the Survey Monkey results to be uh, significant and valid for the, the general population of Columbia. I think it's a great idea to provide surveys at events, uh, where people show up. I'm, I'm very concerned about getting the, the opinions of people that don't show up. Um, because they're clearly people that we are underserving, um, and they should be included in the general plan also. So, um, while we're looking at the survey, if we could figure out the, you know, some way to communicate to the Columbia Association, the, the methodology of how you, you make these statistically valid, uh, surveys, uh, I'm sure that's possible. I, I think that would go a long way to assuaging some of the concerns that I've heard tonight. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I, I think that would be a good first step there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any, any further questions? I, I have a couple of questions. Um, and my question actually has to do with the surveys and bring your mic. Oh. So the, the, the question I have, can you hear me? Yeah, the, the question I have, how, how will the questions for the survey actually be created? So how will you develop the questions to create the survey?
Um, how will we develop as in?
How are you How are you, from what, what types of questions go on the survey? How do you formulate the questions that go on the survey? And who, who, who would have input into that? How, how would you develop?
So we will take the first cut at developing the survey based on your, um, like I said, we're going to use your existing strategic plan as a baseline. So we will develop some questions sort of based on those. And then those will be vetted by the, um, the C A staff and senior leadership. Um, and then we will go back and, and tweak it and make any, any, any changes to the, the survey. So we, there, you know, we'll have a couple of iterations, I think, going back and forth, but we will start with, uh, with the existing, um, with the existing plan. If there are other surveys that have been conducted, we will take those into consideration. If there's other, um, processes that are currently being, uh, you know, like we mentioned, the, the Arts Council and the library system, we'll take a look at those surveys if they're available. Um, and, and then just kind of start developing our questions. Uh, Yeah.
Thanks. Um, the other question I have, so as, as part of the strategic plan.
But the, the C A staff will get, will definitely have an opportunity to, to respond and finalize the survey.
Okay. Um, the other question I have is, as part of the strategic plan, does looking at our mission, vision, um, also is that also include looking at our, is looking at our mission and vision also included as part of developing the strategic plan?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat that from?
So, so is looking at our mission and vision, um, and seeing if we need to make any tweaks to our mission and vision, um, is that part of the strategic plan process?
Well, uh, we will definitely look at the mission and vision that will help us develop the questions. Um, to make tweaks to the v- vision and mission, um, that's sort of something that, that you folks will have to determine. Um, uh, you, you know, I, I, or maybe that's something for you to think about after we develop the, the strategic plan, saying, hey, look, I mean, is it in line and do we need to tweak it? I, I don't know what the process is at your end. Uh, but we will certainly look at those, um, those statements for, for us to move forward. We, we're, we'll definitely take them into consideration.
Because it's, it's, because it's important that both mission, vision and the strategic plan all, all, all line up. Um, Alan?
All line, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Want to say to Bill, I share your, your concern about capturing the voice of people who aren't usually involved in the C A, since we do underserve them. But I'm not so concerned with making a survey statistically rel- uh, valid and and all those things. I think it's input, but it's not, uh, dispositive. So it doesn't need to be that held to that standard. Um, I was going to ask you, Deepa, do you see a strategic plan as being for the staff or the board? And my assumption was you were going to answer both. So I guess I'd like you to talk a little bit about how you see, on the one hand, the staff using a strategic plan and on the other hand, how do you see the board using the strategic plan?
Um, I, I think that, that's, that's a good question. And I, I think for me to give you a a sort of a suitable response, I would like to know more about what the, um, you know, what the roles and responsibilities are for the staff and senior leadership versus the board of directors. Um, I, I do want to say that the strategic plan is going to be one document and I think the entire the, uh, board and the staff will need to work together to sort of forward that, that vision. Um, but there might be specifics that, uh, the board might be responsible for or the staff. It's kind of early to say, but there will be, um, roles that are sort of assigned to, to the different constituents.
Thank you.
Any other last questions? I have just one last question. Um, so early in the, in your presentation, you talked about making sure that we reach out to, uh, key stakeholders um, as part of developing the strategic plan. Um, can you give examples of, of those key secrets? Key stakeholders that, uh, we'll need to reach out to?
Examples of what? I'm sorry?
E stakeholders, um, that we would need to reach out to in developing the strategic, in developing the strategic plan and the survey.
So the key stakeholders, um, in, in, in are the communities that we typically, you know, do surveys or the, um, they're like, they can be anywhere from the public to, um, community associations, to church groups, to academic institutions, to, um, large businesses that are in the community, um, to government officials. It could be any or all of the above. It, it just depends on, uh, what the survey is for, what the nuances are, what the project is. So, uh, we'll need to sit down with Columbia, uh, with C A staff and determine um, who the, who the stakeholders are that, uh, you know, that are out there that you feel we, we must reach out to. um who the who the stakeholders are that, uh you know, that are out there that you feel we we must reach out to. And with that said, I do want to respond to something that came up um on the underserved populations. Those are often the the ones that don't go to the meetings. Um you know, maybe they don't have childcare, or they don't have transportation, or they're working at night, or what have you. Um and those are the ones that are very hard to to access. Uh for this particular effort, given the budget and the timeline, we haven't really developed a strategy to to um target underserved populations, other than having these public surveys. But we have done projects in the past where we have done, um we've gone to um certain small events. Uh we have done door-to-door, we have done a number of different things to actually reach out to these populations and we go to them versus them coming to us. So um you know, again, that is a that is a dependent on on time and 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 a and budget, but that's something that we have done. We we do a lot of equity-related, social equity-related work. And we work with underserved populations. I just wanted to mention that because that term did come, did it did come up, and I want to acknowledge that it is hard to get, um you know, them to participate. That's that's the reality.
And and my last question is, what if any uh post-plan support, so um after the plan is approved, um what if any post-plan support does the process entail? So how how would we, how would we interact with you? How will we interact with you um after the plan is is put into effect in in April? If at all?
Uh and and what's the question? After the plan is put into effect in April, what's the question?
Are the uh contract? So he said, I don't know if you can hear. Yeah, sorry. I I I just got clarification that um the contract, right now, the contract just goes through April. So my question is irrelevant. Uh any final questions? Um there being none, uh thank you for coming out and giving us the presentation, Deepa. Uh with.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you. This is going to be an an exciting project, and uh we look forward to it.
And Dennis, do you have any final comments? Okay. Um is there a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Okay. Uh Andy Moose, Karen Sackens, any objections? Seeing no objections, uh meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-seven. We'll take five minutes before we start the BSA. So please be back at eight oh five.
Please, thanks for stopping by.
Thank you all. Have a good evening and happy Thanksgiving.